Our next piece is going to be "In America, The Beautiful" medley. And you're going to hear both 5th grade and 6th grade singing different parts within the song. Our next piece is going to be "In America, The Beautiful" medley. And you're going to hear both 5th grade and 6th grade singing different parts within the song. Our next piece is going to be "In America, The Beautiful" medley. And you're going to hear both 5th grade and 6th grade singing different parts within the song.
America, let freedom ring from shore to shore. Let music fill the air in song forevermore. With melody of light, in harmony unite, with rhythm breaking off. To see the light of liberty in majesty, America we sing. Oh beautiful, four spacious skies, for amber waves of gray. For purple mountain majesties, above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on you. And crown thy book with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. America, four spacious skies, for amber waves of gray. Let all new worlds in marriage in, of the bloods souls in forevermore. With melody of light, in harmony unite, shed with the grace of the sea. The light of liberty in majesty, of sea to shining sea. America, let freedom ring.
Our next piece is a Swahili greeting song entitled "Funga Alafia." Our next piece is entitled "Canoe Song."
My paddle's keen and bright, flashing with silver. Follow the walkers' flag, dip, dip and swing. Dip, dip and swing, dip, dip and swing, dip, dip and swing. My paddle's keen and bright, flashing with silver. Follow the walkers' flag, dip, dip and swing. Dip, dip and swing, our flag, flashing with silver. Follow the walkers' flag, dip, dip and swing. Dip, dip and swing, dip, dip and swing, dip, dip and swing.
The next is an English folk song entitled "The Water Is Wide" and talks about missing your loved one from far away.
There is a ship that sails the sea. She's love and deep, as deep can be. But not so deep, as is love I am. I fear not in, I sink or swim. Oh, love is handsome, and love is fine. Bright as a jewel, when it is new. But love comes old, and waxes gold. And fades away like morning dew. The water is wide, I cannot get o'er. And neither have I wait to fly. Give me a boat, I can carry two. And we shall cross, my true love and I.
Our next piece is an African-American work song entitled "Old House Tear It Down." And we have some of our members from the Tropical Elementary Guitar Club represented amongst our chorus members as well.
Who's gonna help me tear it down? Bring me a hammer, tear it down. Bring me a saw, tear it down. And you bring me, tear it down. It's a rough machine, tear it down. Old house, build it up. Who's gonna help me build it up? Bring me a hammer, tear it up. Bring me a saw, tear it up. And you bring me, tear it up. It's a rough machine, tear it down. Old house, tear it down. Who's gonna help me tear it down? Bring me a hammer, tear it down. Bring me a saw, tear it down. And you bring me, tear it down. It's a rough machine, tear it down.
Our next portion features some of the gentlemen of the Tropical Elementary Chorus. And this is a song that I'm sure many of you recognize.
When the night has come, and the land is dark. And the moon is the only light we'll see. No, I won't be afraid, no, I won't shed a tear. Just as long as you stand, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. If the sky that we look on should crumble and fall. And the mountains would crumble to the sea. I won't cry, I won't cry, no, I won't shed a tear. Just as long as you stand, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me.
This concludes this portion of our concert. But don't worry, we will be back in a few moments with one final song.
Alfred?
Present.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
This evening, we have two students from Tropical Elementary School to assist us in the opening exercises. Kate Collings, 6th grade, will present the invocation. And Salvatore Carlson, 5th grade, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will those students please come up to the podium? Why don't we start with the pledge?
Now will you please stand? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And Kate, I believe you have the invocation?
"Climb to Your Dreams Come True" by Helen Steiner Rice. Often your tasks will be many, and more than you think you can do. Often the road will be rugged, and the hills insurmountable too. But always remember, the hills ahead are never as steep as they seem. And with faith in your heart, start upward, and climb till you reach your dream. For nothing in life that is worthy is ever too hard to achieve, if you have the courage to try it and you have the faith to believe. For faith is a force that is greater than knowledge or power or skill. And many defeats turn to triumph if you trust in God's wisdom and will. For faith is a mover of mountains, there's nothing that God cannot do. So start out today with faith in your heart and climb to your dreams come true.
Thank you, Kate. So Kate, why don't you come back to the microphone? We'll let ladies go first. Why don't you tell the board and the audience a little bit about yourself?
Well, my name's Kate Collings, as you know. And I go to Tropical Elementary. And I have two dogs, and...
I see that you're in 6th grade. Have you done your entire elementary at Tropical?
No, I started out at Stevenson.
Okay. And so, how many grades have you done at Tropical?
Three.
Okay, and what's been your favorite thing at Tropical for the three grades you've been there?
Mostly the teachers. And the... They use a lot of technology to teach us, which I really like.
Okay, what's been your favorite technology project that you've done?
Mostly using the computer lab for projects and stuff.
Okay, so since you're... As a leader, a 6th grader at Tropical, if a new student were coming to Tropical and you were to meet them tomorrow, what would be some words of encouragement you would give them? Or something that they would have to look forward to as a new student at Tropical?
I would tell them that they'd really like the school, for one. And that whatever teacher they got, I'm sure is good. And that they're really gonna like, and they're really... If they're having trouble with something, they're gonna have people to support them.
Okay, well, I know, I promised not to ask you if there was something you would change because you told me before the meeting started that there was absolutely nothing that you would change at Tropical. So I just wanted to let the audience know that. So why don't you introduce your family you said you brought with you tonight?
Well, I have my mom.
Would mom please stand up? Hi, mom.
And my dad. And my little sister.
Great, well, the board really appreciates you being a part of us tonight. And who is the group that you're here representing in the beautiful shirts?
Tropical Chorus.
Tropical Chorus, okay. Well, they have been great entertainment before the board meeting. So thank you for being here tonight. We look forward to hearing... You can join them back, and we'll look forward to another song in a few minutes here.
Thank you.
Salvatore, tell us something about you. We'd love to hear about you.
I have one dog. I'm 10 years old. And I love Tropical.
And how many years have you been at Tropical?
Um, six.
You've been there from the very beginning?
Yes.
Okay, so what have been some of your most memorable moments at Tropical?
All my teachers, they were great and really supportive.
Okay, and what's been some of your favorite things that you can remember? Your favorite activities?
I remember when my 2nd grade teacher asked me to write a time capsule. That was one of my favorite.
Do you still have the time capsule?
No, they already buried it.
Okay, so maybe someday, many years down the road, you'll come back and have it and see what was in there? If they can find it. I hear that Hoover is still looking for theirs. Is there anything about Tropical that you can think of that you'd like to see changed someday?
I like Tropical, and it's great. But if they could add like a science lab that kids could come after school and once a week, and just do hands-on experiments?
That sounds like a great idea. Did you bring some family with you tonight that you could introduce to us?
My mom.
Mom, stand up.
My dad. And my brother Roman.
And have you... Since you brought up science, is science a field you've thought about going into someday as a career?
Yes.
Any particular field?
Biological.
Biological, so science fair is something that you're really interested in, I bet?
Yes.
Well, excellent. Well, we really appreciate you being a part of our board meeting tonight. And thank you for coming out tonight, so round of applause. Well, prior to the board meeting, we had the great pleasure of listening to the Tropical Chorus under the direction of Daniella Sunderland, music teacher. And the students will perform one additional number.
Work all night till the morning comes. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Grab bananas till the morning comes. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Come, Mr. Tallyman, tally me bananas. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Didn't give for work, I didn't come, you're supposed to idle. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Heyo, he said heyo. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Heyo, he said heyo. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Three and four and five and much. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Six and seven and eight and much. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Don't Mr. Tallyman, tally me bananas. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Didn't give for work, I didn't come, you're supposed to idle. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Heyo, he said heyo. Daylight comes and we wanna go home. Heyo, he said heyo. Daylight comes and we wanna go home.
Thank you so much. And I love the backs of the shirts. For those of you that can't see it, the backs of them say... Treble makers! Absolutely love the shirts. So thank you so much for being a part of our program this evening. We'll take a short recess so the students can gather their belongings. Absolutely love the shirts. So thank you so much for being a part of our program this evening. We'll take a short recess so the students can gather their belongings. The board meeting will begin again in one minute. The board meeting will begin again in one minute. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
Mrs. Niesi and members of the board, on today's agenda, we have one administrative staff recommendation, one recognition item, three resolutions, two presentations, seventeen consent items, and nine information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There has been one deletion, item B5, a check presentation and recognition of Wells Fargo, and two revisions, item F15 on student expulsions, and item F20 on instructional staff recommendations.
Do I have a motion to adopt the October 13, 2015, special school board meeting agenda and its revisions?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. I see it's gonna be one of those nights. Uh-oh. It's a new system, I was told. The voting's not working.
We can't click on it.
Oral vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to administrative staff recommendations.
Under item A7, you have one administrative staff recommendation to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Oh, did yours open?
I was to approve and...
Okay, so are we on... Were you... Any further discussion? Are we gonna try to...
That's not work.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Oh, did I miss one already?
No, I was just wondering if she was gonna say anything.
I was just gonna keep going. Are you... I'm looking back. I was just gonna keep going at this point and do oral votes.
Turn it off on the screen.
That's because she's doing them on... She's doing them manually from her computer. Yeah, I'm looking at Dr. Blackburn. Do we...
So I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome and recognize Cynthia Wilson on her retirement from principal of Sherwood Elementary School, effective October 31, 2015. We want to thank Cynthia for 32 years of dedicated service you provided to the students of Brevard Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a surprise that I am going to go ahead and retire. I fell early in September and hurt myself and need knee replacement surgery and decided I was going to go ahead, because this is actually my 38th year I've had experience before I came to Brevard County Schools. And it has been a pleasure. I knew as a fifth grader I wanted to be an elementary school teacher, and I've stayed in elementary school my whole career and loved every minute of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, am I missing my cue there? Dr. Blackburn, please tell us about the recognition items on this evening's agenda.
Item B8 is to recognize Sun State Bus Centers, Modlin International, and Luke Air Conditioning for their gracious sponsorship of 600 specially-designed T-shirts to commemorate National School Bus Safety Week. R.B. Creach, Director of Transportation, will lead the recognition.
Good evening, board members and Mr. Superintendent. Tonight, we'd like to take a moment at the board's time to remind everyone that next week is National School Bus Safety Week. With more than 480,000 school buses on the road every school day across this nation, there's absolutely no question among transportation safety professionals that school bus transportation is absolutely the safest form of student transportation in the entire world. To help bring awareness to this fact, school districts and education systems across the country will celebrate National School Bus Safety Week beginning this coming Monday, which is October 19, and continuing until Friday, October 23. In an effort to recognize and salute the selfless efforts of the Brevard Transportation Team's dedicated staff of professional bus drivers, routers, mechanical technicians, radio dispatchers, trainers, and other support staff, we have teamed up with three of our corporate sponsors who have graciously provided funding for over 600 distinctive commemorative T-shirts for our support staff and bus drivers to wear during this very special week. The 2015 theme is "A Bully-Free Zone," and as a reminder that we all have a valuable interest in ensuring that we stop bullying. Tonight, we'd like to thank Sun State Bus Centers, Modlin International, and Mobile Climate Control for their support and continuing education, continuing contribution to the education and safety and welfare of Brevard students, and of course, for their gracious donations, which makes this all possible. With us tonight, we have Mr. Bob Dolan, representing Sun State Bus Centers, and Mr. Donnie Calale, of Modlin International. Mr. Dolan, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mark. I just want to thank you for letting us partner with this great county and really cool shirt done by a local student artist with the little buses and Stop Bullying. So thank you for letting us be part of it. Very much.
Board members and Mr. Superintendent, we would like to have you join us down front, if possible, so that we could present you a commemorative T-shirt and help us celebrate National Bus Safety Week and, of course, get that all-important photo. So could we have you come down, please?
Thank you. Yay.
Oh, please.
Hope we get the right side of the camera.
Oh, that's correct.
Oh, good.
Okay, do we get it?
Okay, some of the hands are out and some of them are. Where are we?
Monster.
You want to do it all together? So we get to the sponsor.
Okay, I'm the sponsor here and you're the sponsor here.
One or... No, you can be the sponsor here and you can be the sponsor here.
There we go.
Now we see the bossy one.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We are now ready for resolutions and proclamations. So I hope you're ready, Michelle.
I am ready.
Dr. Blackburn?
Tonight, we have three resolutions and/or proclamations. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will be reading all of them for us.
Whereas Brevard Public Schools' Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard After School stands firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas, the Brevard Public Schools' Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard Adult... Or I'm sorry, After School, has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas, Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs, held this year on October 22, 2015, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas, more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas, many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights, therefore, be it resolved that Brevard Public Schools' Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard After School urges the citizens of Brevard County to ensure that every child has access to a safe, engaging place where the lights are on after school, and be it further resolved that board members and staff of Brevard Public Schools enthusiastically endorse Lights On After School and are committed to innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure that the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the vote then work now? Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Work for me, I don't have problems.
Motion carries unanimously.
We're in the wrong browser. If you open up Internet Explorer and log in, it'll work.
Internet Explorer, it's not working.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'd like to just keep going. Motion carries unanimously. Why don't you go into the next...
National School Psychologist Awareness Week. Whereas, all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supportive, and receive an education that enables them to strive, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas, schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas, mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and the learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And whereas, sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety in supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas, school psychologists are specially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas, school psychologists help children to thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. And whereas, school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize database decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Brevard County, Florida hereby designates November 9 through 13, 2015, as National School Psychologist Awareness Week.
Okay. Give us 30 seconds here. Why are tech experts up here? This is why we should not do technology upgrades before board meetings. Okay. 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 cool shirt done by a local student artist with the little buses and Stop Bullying. So, thank you for letting us be part of it. Very much.
Board members and Mr. Superintendent, we would like to have you join us down front, if possible, so that we could present you a commemorative T-shirt and help us celebrate National Bus Safety Week and, of course, get that all-important photo. So, could we have you come down, please?
Thank you. Yay. Do we bring the shirts down with us?
Oh, please.
Hope we get the right side of the box.
Oh, this looks great.
Oh, good.
Okay, do we get it?
Okay. I'll do you that. I'll look for a bunch of them.
Okay, some of the hands are out and some of them are. Where are we here?
Monsters.
You want to do it all at one? We can do the sponsor.
Okay, I'm a sponsor, Gary, and you're a sponsor, Gary.
One or no, you can be a sponsor, and he's a sponsor, Gary.
There we go.
Now, now we see the bossy one. One, two. One, two.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. We are now ready for resolutions and proclamations. So, I hope you're ready, Michelle.
I am ready.
Dr. Blackburn?
Tonight, we have three resolutions and/or proclamations. Michelle Irwin, Director of Community Relations, will be reading all of them for us.
Whereas Brevard Public Schools Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard After-School stands firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas, the Brevard Public Schools Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard Adult, or I'm sorry, After-School, has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas, Lights On After-School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 22nd, 2015, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas, more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas, many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights, therefore, be it resolved that Brevard Public Schools Office of Adult and Community Education, Department of Brevard After-School urges the citizens of Brevard County to ensure that every child has access to a safe, engaging place where the lights are on after-school, and be it further resolved that board members and staff of Brevard Public Schools enthusiastically endorse Lights On After-School and are committed to innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure that the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the vote then work now? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying?
Work for me, I don't have problems.
Motion carries unanimously.
We're in the wrong browser. If you open up, if you open up Internet Explorer and log in, it'll work.
Internet Explorer, it's not working.
Okay.
Well, at this point, I'd like to just keep going. Motion carries unanimously. Why don't you go into the next?
National School Psychologist Awareness Week. Whereas, all children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supportive, and receive an education that enables them to strive, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas, schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas, mental health is directly linked to their learning and development, and the learning environment provides an optimal context to promote good mental health. And sound, whereas, sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention, early intervention, and school safety, and supporting culturally diverse student populations. And whereas, school psychologists are specially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic supports that lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas, school psychologists help children to thrive by nurturing their individual strengths across both personal and academic endeavors. And whereas, school psychologists are trained to assess student and school-based barriers to learning as well as individual strengths, utilize database decision-making, implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and evaluate outcomes and improve accountability. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Brevard County, Florida hereby designates November 9 through 13, 2015, as National School Psychologist Awareness Week.
Okay, give us 30 seconds here. Why are tech experts up here? This is why we should not do technology upgrades before board meetings. Okay. Okay, 09. Okay. Okay. Okay, motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion was made to approve by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's see if we can vote now. Yay. Okay.
Tammy's happy.
Tammy's happy. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler.
National Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas, thousands of Florida children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And whereas, 77% of all children in school are bullied verbally, of those, 28% are also bullied through physical abuse. And whereas, targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas, children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas, children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, I, Rick Scott, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as National Bullying Prevention Month and urge all Floridians to support activities that promote healthy child, youth, and character development.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Belford, seconded by Mrs. Henderson. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Dr. Blackburn, do we have any presentations on tonight's agenda?
We do. Tonight, we have two presentations. Item D12 is a presentation on the TNTP Insight Survey and will be facilitated by Deborah Pace, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. Dr. Pace.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Blackburn, and community. I am pleased to share this evening some information about an exciting opportunity for the school district to move forward with the superintendent's vision of using more than test scores to measure our growth and performance at all levels of the organization. Last year, as an element of the school district's work with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and FADs, the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, Brevard Public Schools was invited to participate in a district diagnostic exercise along with five other Florida school districts to gauge levels of implementation of effective teacher evaluation systems, human capital management, and instructional readiness for the new Florida standards and assessments. A team of educational researchers from Education Delivery Institute, EDI, spent three days on-site interviewing focus groups of teachers, principals, board members, parents, and district leaders, and visiting nine of our schools to observe lessons and talk with smaller groups of internal stakeholders. In addition, our K-12 classroom teachers were invited to participate in the TNTP Insight Survey to gather information about school and district instructional culture, collaboration, professional development, career progression, retention and recruitment, and other elements of effective human capital management. This survey has been administered in over 1,300 schools and in more than 25 districts across the nation. The primary goal of the Insight Survey is to provide information to school and district leaders about what great leaders do differently, to build the strong professional cultures that lead to retention of high-quality teachers and improvement in student achievement. Results identify bright spots, notified, known in this category as greenhouse schools, that we can all learn from in our efforts to get better at what we do. The Instructional Culture Index in particular looks at three specific questions on the survey, and positive responses to these three questions have been statistically proven to correlate with higher levels of student achievement and higher retention of high-quality teachers. Those questions are identified on this slide. The expectations for effective teaching are clearly defined at my school. Teachers at my school share a common vision of what effective teaching looks like in practice, and my school is committed to improving my instructional practice. We analyzed VAM results from 2014 and from our BPS schools, and we indicated that same strong correlation. Our schools with higher, stronger instructional culture indexes also had higher VAM results, aligning with the research that TNTP done, has done on the national level, showing that student growth scores are typically 17% higher in reading and 23% higher in math in schools in the top quartile of that strong instructional culture. So, I want to share with you just a little bit of district highlights from this particular baseline year. 81% of our classroom teachers responded, so we felt like it was a very strong participation rate, over 3,400 teachers responded to the survey. The district national average, or the district average was above the national average, and we identified several strengths. 78% of our classroom teachers responded favorably to the statement, "My school is a good place to learn," and we had similarly strong results, over three-quarters of our teachers responded favorably about school leadership and also the district's focus on continuous improvement. This bar graph replicates the results of that Instructional Culture Index, and you can see that 29% of our Brevard Public Schools ranked in the top quartile nationally with Instructional Culture Index scores above the top quartile of 8.5 out of 10. We found some strong results from those top-quartile schools. In particular, teachers at our top-quartile schools valued clear vision, school leaders as role models, and follow-through on priorities and commitments, as indicated in this particular chart with the three questions identified. We also looked at places where we know that we can grow as a district, and we've used those scores and results to drive our professional development planning, our school improvement planning, and also our district strategic planning efforts that are getting started now. Observation and feedback was an area where we ranked below the national average, and we always want to outperform the national average, of course, first in Brevard. In particular, teachers identified the fact that they didn't really see overwhelmingly that the feedback that they were getting was helping them to implement changes in practice that would make a difference in student outcomes. So, we know that this is a foundational area where we can improve by providing teachers with specific feedback, follow-up, and support, and that's been an area that we've worked to leverage this summer in our training and also through the most recent DOE Instructional Leadership Grant that's on the agenda for your approval this evening. We also found an anomaly. Teachers at our top-quartile schools actually had fewer total observations than teachers at our bottom-quartile schools, but the feedback that they indicated they'd received was more valuable in helping them to drive improvement in their practice. So, we've had an opportunity to share with our administrators that more is not necessarily better, that while we want you in classrooms frequently, it's really about the follow-up, the conversations that happen after those classroom visits that teachers value and that will make a difference in improving our practice. Another growth opportunity was in the evaluation itself. We had a very interesting dichotomy in the results, in that teachers reported feeling very clearly what the expectations are in the evaluation, yet they didn't really believe that those same expectations were helping to identify their strengths and weaknesses as effectively as we want them to. After all, continuous improvement in practice has been an underlying principle since the inception of the evaluation system. Across the district, teachers have indicated they need more specific feedback as well as support and follow-up through the evaluation process in order to implement changes and improve their practice. And this is something that, again, we focused on in our training for administrators over the summer and that we'll be focusing on throughout the year with the Instructional Leadership Grant. Scores on the learning environment showed a real difference because there was such a big disparity in this particular element, and we know that for schools to be successful in improving learning, the learning environment has to be safe and secure and one that we can really work on. Over half of our schools had scores in this domain above the national average, as you can see, but we had some schools with low scores that were really working hard to try to improve. This shows the difference in this particular domain on two questions that fed to that score. My school is a good place to teach and learn, and school leaders promote a safe and productive learning environment in my school. Our top-quartile schools were consistently above even the 90% mark in that particular area, whereas our lower-quartile schools were at 64%. We have initiated a pilot with a North Area Theater Chain to specifically work on teacher leadership in this area with CTQ and Brevard Federation for Teachers through our NEA grant to try to focus on a virtual teacher collaboratory around problem-solving, specifically to look at learning environment, something we're hoping we could leverage in other schools as we move forward successfully. Another area that we know we want to try to work on in terms of effective instruction and capital, human capital management, is the idea of career progression. Right now, our teachers really don't believe that unless they leave the classroom, there's an opportunity for them to grow and impact the performance of their peers. We've taken some baby steps in this regard by negotiating the teacher leader supplements through our teacher contract negotiation process, but we know this is something that we want to try to work on as we move forward. And finally, the last growth opportunity that I want to share with you relates to this idea of the readiness for the standards. As you can see, our implementation was at the national average, and our teachers believed that schools were ready to implement those changes. But when we looked deeper at the survey results, only 38% of our teachers who responded felt like the new standards were really going to drive our kids towards college and career readiness, which is their goal. And when we looked deeply at the idea of students supporting their answers and explaining their thinking, absolutely fundamental for implementation of the new standards at an effective level, only about 55% of our teachers felt like we were there. So, that is something that we're working through professional development and curriculum and instruction to try to provide ways to help strengthen. So, where do we go from here? We have really been using these results across the district at all levels. Obviously, in human resources, we've worked to develop new communication tools about the why of IPIS to try to deepen that understanding of what it's about as opposed to just knowing what the expectations are. We've also changed our evaluator-update training, really focusing on consistency with the process and the importance of feedback, and we're looking at how we can leverage our bright spots, identifying those top-quartile principals and teacher leaders from those schools so that we can focus on what they're doing well, that we can build on among their peers and colleagues. The area superintendents have been working on school-level data and teacher comments with principals and are using that in the school improvement planning process, and our principals are using this data as well as in their school improvement plans with their own professional growth and deliberate practice goals. In addition, some other next steps that we are already underway with, EDI offered to provide some strategic planning assistance specifically to implementation of the evaluation system for HR at no additional cost to the district, and we've been working with a small implementation on that process. And we have also proposed with them to help them guide the district's strategic planning large-scale view because they already know us and have that relationship and the deliverables and processes in place to help us with that effort. Our Understanding by Design training that we implemented this summer with principals and teacher leader teams and are carrying on throughout the year was a real effort to try to get at that anomaly with the Common Core and Florida standards and making sure that teachers understand the standards-based planning and how to get to that level of rigor in that piece. And I mentioned the Virtual Teacher Collaboratory, and then, of course, tonight, we are asking for support for, from the board, for implementation of the Insight Survey for the next three years. It is information item H34, and we'll be coming back to the board at the next meeting for your approval so that we can, again, follow the superintendent's vision of using something besides test scores to measure our improvement as we work on using people and processes to judge performance. And finally, there is an additional free tool that we haven't leveraged, as well as I think we want to, and we'll be communicating more with principals through the area superintendents and leadership team meetings and teacher meetings about the Teacher Talent Toolbox, which is free for districts partnering with them on that TNTP Insight Survey process. So, thank you very much for your time and attention and support. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Dr. Pace, if you could humor me for a moment because I'm thinking I must have missed something. On the slide where you were talking about the growth opportunity specifically regarding the growth opportunity for evaluation?
Yes.
The second measure there was the...
What slide number are you on?
13.
Okay.
The second measure there says, "The teacher evaluation process helps identify my strengths and weaknesses."
Mm-hmm.
Now, I understand that we're only seeing one question there, but could you, could you repeat to me what your plan is to deal with that opportunity for growth?
When we dug deeper with teachers, because we did pull together principals and teacher leaders from our top-quartile schools in the spring, and we also talked with teachers from other districts who'd implemented the survey with this, there was some concern about whether the question was measuring the observational elements of the rubrics or the student achievement component of the rubrics, the VAM piece, which obviously there's a lot of skepticism about, or a combination of both. What we have tried to do through our communication tools, through the pre-planning message, was to make sure that we had a consistent message across the district by using a video as opposed to just a PowerPoint that each school would then show on its own so that people heard the why and the connection to the statutory requirements and the Florida educator-accomplished practices. But then also, our analyzing rubrics training this summer was specifically for teacher leaders from every school to be able to go back and share again with their teachers what those elements in the rubrics mean and how they contribute to improve teacher learning. And within our rubrics this year, we've added many of the elements from Hattie's Visible Learning, indicating what the effect size is of the particular strategies that are throughout the rubric so teachers can see if I focus on this particular strategy or this element of standards-based learning, it's going to have a greater impact for kids than otherwise. So, it's really kind of explaining in more depth, but we'll also be working again with our IPIS project team in the spring, like we do every year, to look at those elements of the rubric and make sure that they make sense and are identifying the strengths and weaknesses that we want to capture.
So, I guess the thing that I would just want to make sure, it almost sounds like we are saying they don't quite understand how what they're being evaluated on really ties into their strengths and weaknesses, as opposed to have we considered the possibility that their responses indicate that they don't feel like their strengths and weaknesses are really being considered with the current evaluation system?
We're looking, we're trying to look at both angles in that regard. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
and will be facilitated by Janice Schultz, Director of Career and Technical Education. Ms. Schultz?
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn, Ms. Neese, and board members. I'm really happy to be here tonight to share our industry certification results from school year 14-15. Each of you should have a packet, which includes the 2014-15 industry certification results, and I'll be referring to this document as I speak with you this evening. So, why do we do industry certification? Why do we have those tests? First of all, there's a federal legislation, and that federal legislation is designed to measure the extent of what are CTE concentrators, and that students that complete three credits in the same CTE program, what extent they're leaving high school with validated technical skills. The Florida Department of Education approves certifications on the technical skill attainment list. The FLDOE tells us what our performance rate will be each year, and we must agree to that performance rate, and this year, we've agreed that our performance rate will be 94%, and that is 94% of every of our students that concentrate will earn an industry credential. So, the diagram shows you the Federal Perkins Act versus the Florida statute, which is the CAPE legislation, and that legislation requires districts to offer career-themed courses that lead to industry certification and furthermore defines those certifications. They're not necessarily the same ones that are in our federal requirement. These certifications are determined by industry. Career Source Florida meets and determines what certifications they must be on the Florida statewide demand occupation list. They must be on the Florida statewide demand occupation list, they must be nationally recognized, and they must be a product of an independent party. And also, that legislation states that those certifications must be taught by a skilled professional who possesses that industry certification or higher. After Career Source selects a list that meets that, those qualifications, the DOE picks from that list. That list is the list we refer to as the CAPE list. That list, if you pass a certification on that, it qualifies a student for a merit designation on their high school diploma, one of the two high school diploma designations. It is included in the designation of school grade along with AP, IB, ACE, and dual enrollment. It's also eligible for bonus FTE, and if you open and look at one of the charts at one of the schools, you'll see the weights there by the certifications, and we're going to go through those charts so I can explain. The current certifications we offer now are either a point-one or a point-two, but there are certifications that earn up to a point-five bonus FTE. The last requirement for us, and reason why we offer industry certification, is Brevard Public Schools' rigorous course graduation requirement. Students are required to complete a program of study which includes a minimum of three credits and at least one of the following areas, and I'm going to let you read those. That rigorous course requirement is to ensure that every one of our graduates is career and college-ready. The CTE option for rigor is that students completing CTE programs have the opportunity to earn an industry certification. So in addition to the federal, state, and district requirement for industry certification, it is in the best interest of our students. We currently have forty-two different CTE programs throughout the district. We offer thirty-nine different certifications from twenty-five vendors, and the vendors, we are subject to what the vendors tell us we have to do as far as assessments. All of the assessments that we offer are on the Perkins Skill Attainment List. Thirty-one are on the funding list. Fourteen of the certs we offer have a post-secondary articulation, which means if a student earns that certification, the community college or state college must award them college credit. These certifications, and they're the ones that are point-two on the list, can also substitute for two math credits, except for Algebra I and Geometry, and up to one science credit. We had eleven students last year that were able to graduate because they had earned an industry certification that they could substitute for one of those credits. Our industry certifications can be web-based, they can be pencil-paper, some have a performance requirement, and some have a work experience requirement. They're vendor-controlled. They control everything. They tell us what version of the software we have to use in the assessment, they tell us the proctor requirements, they tell us the location and the method of assessment. Some of them are offered in the classroom, some we actually bring off to an offsite and offer those assessments. They determine if we can have practice tests, they determine if we can retake, they determine the length of time between retakes, they determine what the teacher must have to test their students, they determine any accommodations for our special needs students, if any. Some do not allow accommodations, and they also determine the cost. We try, as a district, to get the best cost by purchasing everything at the district level. So our results for fourteen-fifteen. If you look on page five of your handout, you will see the last five years, and you can see that last year, we had five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven students who participated with forty-five hundred sixty-seven completing. Why are there some that are still completing? Because some of them take multiple years, those are the ones that are in progress, the eleven hundred and twenty. Some of them require a student to graduate, and some have more than one assessment that we offer throughout different courses. Last year, three thousand five hundred and sixty-five certifications were earned with a district pass rate of seventy-eight point six percent. Unofficially, because we really don't know our graduation rate at this point, thirty-two percent of the 2015 Brevard Public School graduates earned at least one industry certification, which made them actually prepared for post-secondary education and the workforce. If you look on page nine of your handout, it shows a school summary with a total district industry certification results by school, pages thirteen through eighteen. Pages twenty-nine through thirty-five are the individual middle school results. Last year was a new year for being able to offer digital tools and industry certifications to middle school students. If you just pick one of the schools, you can see that each CTE program is listed showing the certification that was taken. I happen to be looking on page fifteen, and I'm looking at Bayside High School, and you can see in a program, three certifications were offered. You can see the X by school grade, that was if it's going to count for school grade as the others do. The ones that don't have an X are on the federal requirement for the Perkins Skill Attainment List. You can see the number of students identified. If a student is in a course, that student is required to take the industry certification. The teacher does not get to be the gatekeeper and say, "Well, this student, you know, they're not, they're not the best student, I don't think they're going to pass." And I can tell you, other districts do that. They only let those take that they think are going to pass. All students take. So then you'll see how many actually took, and if we have a discrepancy between how many were identified and how many took, we ask the question, "Why weren't those students testing?" You can see those that are in progress, those that are passing, and the number that are failing with percentages for each. And there's also a school total for each column.
Any questions?
If you look on pages thirty-nine through...
Janice, we have a question.
I was just curious, what are the reasons for not taking the test?
They moved away, they failed the course, and those are the only acceptable reasons.
Okay. Thank you.
If you look on pages thirty-nine through forty-six, you will see where we compare assessment, show results by assessment. So I want to know, for example, how did everybody do in Adobe Dreamweaver? I can look and I can say, "Oh, well, it was offered in web, it was offered in digital, it was offered in gaming, and it was offered in comtech." So it wasn't limited to one program. And how did the other programs do on offering that particular certification? And then you can also go to the back and find where we compare program to program, so you can see, how did web development across the district? What certifications were offered in web development? So you can, so that you have that opportunity to compare. It is very difficult for us to compare with other districts because we require all of our students to take a test, and mainly because we don't get those results. We don't, we don't see any of that. And when we count our industry certs, we include the Perkins Skill Attainment List as well. There are other districts that don't because they have quit paying attention to that federal retirement requirement and only offer those that are on the funding list. This current school year, an industry certification will serve as the final exam for sixty-seven of our CTE courses. So what kind of certifications did we earn? Microsoft Office Bundle, 2013, which to get that, you have to pass Word, Excel, and PowerPoint. Adobe, including Photoshop, Dreamweaver, Flash, InDesign, Illustrator, and we actually had five students take Premiere Pro and pass. ServSafe, the Certified Food Manager, AutoCAD, we had Inventor, Revit, and AutoCAD. SolidWorks, the Certified Nursing Assistant, and I have to tell you that we just found out that the pass rate last quarter in the state for the CNA exam was seventy-four percent. Our pass rate was ninety-eight percent. The Staff Credential, Certified Medical Administrative Assistant, and the Ready-to-Work. The Ready-to-Work certificate, the student must pass three proctored assessments, reading for information, applied mathematics, and locating information. It's offered only to seniors. During the fourteen-fifteen school year, over fourteen hundred students earned the Ready-to-Work credential. Since the inception of the program eight years ago, over twelve thousand students in Brevard have earned the Ready-to-Work credential, but as a result of budget cuts, the Ready-to-Work credential program will not be implemented in the fifteen-sixteen. And that's not our budget cuts, those are state budget cuts. So here's a five-year summary. This is part of what you saw on page five of the book. Looking at this slide, you can see we're testing more students each year. You can compare how we performed and improved over the past five years. You can see that we are continuing to test more and more students, and we're pretty proud of the fact that we've had so many students earn industry certification. If you look at the last page in your book, you can see a return on investment, because you can see we've paid a lot of money for industry certs over the past five years, but you can also see we've had quite a return on our investment. Last school year, we paid over three hundred thousand, and we expect to get one point three million back in bonus FTE. One of the important things about this bonus money is all of our teachers earn fifty dollars for every student that passes that certification up to two thousand. This year, from based on the fourteen-fifteen, because the money comes in February the following year, we estimate that eighty-three returning CTE teachers will be paid a bonus of a district total of about ninety thousand dollars of that money, and that's pretty exciting. Another requirement of statute is that we notify parents of students who earn industry certification that articulate to post-secondary credit the cost savings of tuition and fees, and we provide them additional information on industry certifications that are available to students. You should have that sheet with your materials as well, you have that with your packet. We sent that to the principals, we asked it to be posted on a website, we asked it to be placed in newsletters, and we also are going to be asking our CTE teachers to hand that out to their student. The cost on that sheet, the return on investment, includes the cost of college credit, the books, and in some cases, training, because some of those assessments you're not allowed to take unless you've had training, and the cost of the assessment. So what are the benefits of industry certification? College and career-ready. CTE and industry certification is an important component of transitioning from school to post-secondary in a career, ensuring that our students have the skills and credentials to get good jobs and to provide a skilled workforce that our nation needs to secure its economic and social prosperity. It's an assurance to employers that students have the required skills. Many times, it's skills that are needed in post-secondary programs. I have letters and a file in my office from students that are in universities throughout the country saying, "Thank you so much for ensuring that I knew that and I was certified. I'm the leader in my class. The class is a cinch to me. I'm teaching other students. I'm working because I have this industry certification." It's a part of school grade in the formula, just like I said, along with AP, IB, ACE. Some students use it for college credit. And then the bonus FTE. Statutes require that eighty percent of that bonus FTE go back to the program that earned it. So it may look like CTE is holding a law, a large sum of money, and that may be true, but it's designated, eighty percent has to go back to the program that earned it. And industry certifications are reflected on a high school transcript. In addition, every year, when a student graduates and they've earned any industry cert throughout the year, they receive a pen, and each of you should have one of those pens with you today. So while I'm here, I thought I might just give you, get a moment to tell you what's new in CTE, because we have some new, exciting things this year. We try to keep our fingers on the pulse of what's happening in the workforce. We listen to our industry partners regarding their needs for current and future employers. For example, we heard from the aviation industry that it's growing, and that the district's response was to create an aviation program at O'Gally High School. If you haven't been able to see it, we bought airplanes, we've been buying wings and all kinds of things, and it's going to be an awesome opportunity, not only for O'Gally students, but it's going to be open to all students in the district. We also started a maritime program at Rockledge High School at request from the Propeller Club and other industry representatives at the port, seeing all the expansion and the working, works that are closing in on them, and so we decided we needed to put a maritime academy, and Rockledge High School was begging for it.
Janice, can I, I noticed the schools that are listed here, how did these schools get chosen for these programs? Because I noticed by going through your booklet that some schools are very rich in programs and some schools are very lean in their programs. So how did these particular schools get chosen for additional CTE programs?
Well, these, these particular schools?
Yeah. What was the process involved?
The process for aviation was we looked at schools that were around the Melbourne Airport. We looked at schools that had a facility that could accommodate it and be close enough for kids to have that experience to work there. That's how aviation. Maritime was, not only was I being courted by the Propeller Club and the port, there were parents that were heavily involved in Rockledge that were also, at the same time, begging, "Rockledge High School, can we have a maritime program?" And it, it fits in with the other programs they offer there. So it's, whenever we start a program, we look for a facility and a facility that will accommodate the equipment, and then we look for building a curriculum, and we look for a teacher to be able to teach those. Both of these, the ship has left the port, we've started the program with one section of students, and we're still building the curriculum and buying, buying equipment and trying to figure out what we're going to do. So part of the time for those teachers is designated for them to be out in industry. So part of that was a desire from the school, location, willingness of the administration to put it on, and, and having an enrollment such that students could sign up for it. My experience has been, when a school enrollment stays constant and you add a program, those students come from somewhere else, so generally, you, something is abandoned or you thoughtfully abandon something. Both of those schools could have used an additional CTE program. Principals of Teaching at Bayside came from a request from the school. They said they had a lot of students that wanted to go into education. It's a fairly easy program to add, it doesn't require a huge facility because a classroom works, and so they got a teacher, were willing to do that, so it was real easy to add. Emergency Medical Responder at Melbourne High School, that request came from the school. They had students that were interested in doing that, and it's the third course in a program we already have, so basically, the patient care program can splinter off to two different allied health programs. Fashion at Viera High School, it was a request from the school because they had students that were requesting the program. We already had a lab that could accommodate the program, so we said yes.
Okay, because I'm just, I've got schools, one of them in my area that's very slim on programs, one of them, a teacher requested a Science Research Academy and was told that there was roadblocks, that there were going to be no new academies, and that's why I was a little floored when I saw this tonight.
Well, any academy has to have a CTE component.
Right.
And I think they were told they needed to have a CTE component, and they didn't want a CTE component, because I think the school you're talking about also has a Fine Arts Academy, and CTE is a spoke on each one of those decisions, so he gets to be in that Fine Arts Academy.
Okay, because the Fine Arts Academy doesn't have a CTE component either.
It does, it has drafting, it has fashion. Those are the two components in the Fine Arts Academy, and digital and multimedia.
Okay.
They have those three components of the Fine Arts Academy.
Well, and then I looked at Space Coast, you know, they have very limited offerings on the, on here too, and I just, I looked at some of the other...
Who does?
Space Coast, and there were some other high schools, and I guess what my biggest concern is as a, as a parent also, is there are some outstanding programs on here... programs on here, but if they're not at my high school, then I don't have access to those. And I guess that's a concern I have as a board member, as we continue to allocate resources to those. I guess I would like to have a process. And I know we talk a lot about this, Dr. Blackburn, I'm concerned about the process. There are a lot of programs at Viera High School, and I think that's great, but we're also very low, I mean, we have more programs at Viera High School than in any other high school right now. And I guess I just want to make sure that we are being equitable in our CTE programs. And it doesn't, it seems like the process to me right now is, is if a principal wants a program, they get a program. And at least that's what I'm hearing tonight. And I guess I'm just questioning, Dr. Blackburn, what is the process? And if a principal wants to invest in a program, they get a program. If a school doesn't want to invest in a program, maybe they don't have a lot of programs. And I don't know if that's what I'm hearing or not. But I guess I would like to have more of a process, and a more, a better idea, because right now, there are certain parts of our county where students don't have a lot of access to these wonderful programs, and I would like to see more expansion of these in all of our schools, not just in a small number of them. That's my concern.
We do have choice, and students can choose to go to another school that offers a program. Putting in a CTE program can be incredibly expensive. I've had the opportunity to do that in many schools and watch the facility, and to make those modifications. We, this summer, expanded an automotive lab, just enough that we could get computers in the lab, and it was a hundred thousand dollars. That was not buying any furniture, any equipment, it was just expanding the facility. And so, and I have, I'm making a list of people that want things, but you can't add a program without making modifications to a facility. Many times, the equipment drives those modifications. You can't have a culinary program without having an ancil system that penetrates the roof, and it starts getting involved with all kinds of people, it becomes very expensive. And so, many times-
And I commend you for all, and I'm, and Janice, I'm not picking, I love your programs. And what I'm asking is, is access. And all I'm asking for, Dr. Blackburn, is, because I do see some inequities in some of our schools, is maybe we could have some board dialogue on what programs are out there, what access. And maybe this is the time we need to start looking at our corridor busing again, and having access for our kids to get to some of these programs. You know, we don't have a location for a central vocational school. That's always been one of the geographic challenges of Brevard County. We don't have a central location. Maybe we need to start looking again at where these programs are at, and have a plan. I don't hear a strategic plan, Janice, for these programs, is what I'm bringing up. I'd like to have a strategic plan for our CTE programs as opposed to where is it we're going. We need to be looking at our manufacturers. What I'm hearing is, this is what we're doing for next year. I don't hear some strategic planning with that. And that's what I, that's all I'm asking for, for this, is let's plan, let's know where we're going, let's bring in all the partners with that. And I guess I'm looking at my board members to see if you're on board with that, too. That's what I would like to see, but I guess I'm only one of five.
I'll second that, Amy. I think you made some great points, and certainly they're awesome programs.
Absolutely.
But the way it came across, and it comes across in the presentation, is that the squeaky wheel gets the program. And that's really how it sounds. Like, if the parents yell loud enough for the Propeller Club gets involved, then we give it to that school, and there is no process to figure out if that truly is the best. And there maybe is, and maybe we don't have it in front of us. But I think we just need to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and that we are giving the opportunities across the district. Because certainly, if you look up at Titusville, and Astronaut, and Space Coast, most of those CTE programs are repetitive between those three schools, but you don't really have any of the special ones that are down in maybe the middle part of the county or the southern part of the county. So I think we need to make sure that we are allocating our funding across the entire district. And anytime there's a new program that is going to, that is on the table, that it is, goes through a process to make sure that it fits, that it fits for the entire county, not just for maybe one small group that was loud enough to get it.
Yeah.
It would be great if every child had access to every opportunity. We all agree with that. We hear, I've heard repetitively that we need a centralized facility. You're right, we're challenged by the county. If we had a centralized facility and we brought back busing, every student would have an equal opportunity. But that's a challenge in itself because of the cost of a facility. I think partnering with Eastern Florida State College would be a fantastic way to solve that problem. In the meantime, we work, I know Janice works hard on business partnerships to make some of this happen. And if a business steps up and makes, creates an opportunity, they're not going to create four, five, six, seven necessarily, they may only be willing to step up for one. In which case, equitable opportunity for everybody becomes real difficult. And do we not do that one opportunity because it limits who can access it? Or we just, sometimes we just have to do the best that we can. It would be great if we had a plan to make this available to everybody. And we, I'd support conversation to see if we can get to that point. I think it's complicated, but I hear that topic repetitively, so I think it's worthy of extensive conversation. Thank you. You do a great job. I know a lot of the businesses out in the community that you partner with, and it's just amazing what you bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that the district values CTE, and values our industry certification, and understands the importance to our students, our families, and to industry. By having CTE programs on our high school campus, all students have the opportunity to enroll and earn these valuable credentials. Not only are we meeting our local, state, and federal requirements, but industry certifications continue, provide a continuous improvement model for instruction, and provide business and industry with the assurance that our CTE students have the skills to fill their openings. Industry-certified students are prepared for both secondary education and the workforce. I thank you for your interest, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Yeah, Dr. Blackburn.
One, definitely want to congratulate you, Janice, on the work. The sentiments that I've heard in the communities echo to a T what I heard here this evening from the board members. The programs are phenomenal, outstanding. I mean, the adjectives used to describe the programs out in the communities, just amazing. Coupled with that are the sentiments that we want more, and we want more in strategic locations across the district. And in some initial kind of data findings, we see where some of the geographical inequities are present, not intentionally created, I don't think, but not deliberately acted upon either. And so, the requests I heard here this evening was for some extensive dialogue, and that dialogue is coming in short order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just, and this is outside of the, probably the scope of this, but to add on to that, the ROI that this program is, it's intrinsic to the program, obviously, and certainly, we need to have some sort of benchmark, and certainly, certification is one of those. I think we could expand it into, just as we, as we look at acceptance to four-year colleges and two-year colleges, we look at it to job placement in our local workforce. Because that's where we draw the line back to what we're actually doing. Industry certification is great, but if it doesn't translate into something that is actually useful here for that individual student, then maybe we haven't drawn the line that we need to, or pulled the thread that we need to. So I think we could expand on that, and probably drill a little bit deeper to figure out exactly how we prepare those students and how we're doing, and give us some feedback, and continue to evolve the program.
I'd love to see some type of annual metric on the dollars going directly into the pockets of either current or former students that have finished with these credentials from our local business community. So that would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please be reminded that profane, abusive, or slanderous speech is not permitted. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name for the record. We have five speakers tonight. The first three speakers are Kinley Nagel, Dan Bennett, and Richard Smith. So Kinley Nagel.
Hi, I'm Kinley Nagel. I live on Indian River Drive. I'm a teacher, special ed. And I'm here today, as always, when I speak to educate people regarding learning disabilities. And now, today, we were speaking of the National Bowling Month, October. So it ties in extremely well to the learning disabilities, as was stated. Today, I bring a voice to the unspoken and cruel bullying and persecution that our children are experiencing. The pain of our country can be heard in our children's silent cries. We must stop labeling our children ADHD, bipolar, autistic, dyslexic. Our society is causing the learning disabilities. When adults bully adults, and we don't talk about it because we're too afraid, our children instinctually know to be afraid. Such terror in our children leads to fear and anxiety that causes the learning disabilities, mental illness, and violence. We can no longer sit here today and let a small percentage of greedy, rich, and evil good old boys control us. I choose to act in spite of fear. I am enough. I am a special ed teacher, a mother, and I know that I saw these children thrive in the classroom. We must not fear loving ourselves and our children. I stand here out of love for our children and urge you to stop evil. There is a disconnect in our country. Be afraid for our children. Hire me and start the act of progression to move forward out of this insidious situation which no one speaks of. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Bennett?
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Tough act to follow. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item H34, which references Agenda Item D12, which talks about a good spending of money, which you're going to do tonight. You know, I knew that if I lived long enough, there's certain things I might, I might see. I might see the Cubs competitive in the playoffs. I might see Steve Spurrier retire someday. I might see her hire her. But it's important, it's important that this district sees something, which I've been waiting for, for a long time, which is an honest admission that there is a connection between principal behavior, school culture, and student performance. This board, this district has given lip service to that for years, and now it's finally happening. I was at an event last night, great author, speaking about, bestselling author, was speaking about, bestselling in Melbourne, was speaking about, was speaking about some anecdotes that he's heard since being, talking about Dr. Blackburn, talking about some anecdotes that you've heard out there and talking to the community. And then you were able to take some of those anecdotes, a lot of positives, by the way. Heard a lot of positive things, and able to look at the survey results from last year, the survey that Deborah was talking about in D12, that you're going to be talking about in H34, and see a lot of correlation between positive anecdotes, a positive school culture, and positive student performance. And then, there were also anecdotes where there were negative anecdotes, and he was able to look at survey results, and other people were able to look at survey results and say, "How about that? The data matches the anecdotes." Well, BFT, hire us, we'll work for free. We've been doing surveys for years, principal surveys, and we've been trying to get the district to see that when teachers respond and tell you what's going on in schools, it's valid. And we've been rebuffed through the years, although there has been some action recently. But now there's a serious commitment. And now you're ready to actually invest in a valid survey to make sure that we make these connections. I want to share another anecdote, I want to share one anecdote with you all that I shared years ago. And I challenge you all to come to me afterwards and ask for the school, because on the, Dr. Blackburn, I'll never come up and name a school if I'm talking about something, but this was a real situation, a real school. A couple people got me on speakerphone, they're talking to me in the office, talking about some issues at a school, they're talking about a principal. And I said, "You all need to share that with the district." And they didn't want to. And I said, "Why won't you share these concerns with the district?" And they said, "Because we're parents. And we've been told by the principal that if the district finds out about this, our kids will lose their out-of-area, be sent back to their neighborhood schools." And I shared this with you years ago when that happened. And I said, "Come ask me what school that is." And I still haven't had to reveal the name of the school yet. There's a connection between behavior, culture, and student achievement, and I'm glad that you're ready to address it. So I ask you to please spend the money that's being asked for on H34, and we're going to move forward together. Thank you.
Superintendent, board, chair. Good things are happening. It's always good when good things are happening. I believe that this superintendent did some marvelous work taking on the task of teacher morale, and I see it everywhere I go where morale is better. And that's something we can build on. I want to thank Dr. Pace and Jim Hickey, and the entire BPS negotiating team. I certainly want to thank Dan Bennett and the BFT negotiating team for coming up what I think is an outstanding contract. I expect that the vote that will take place this week will be overwhelmingly positive. It should be. It's a, it's a contract that deserves a positive vote. I believe that with this, and with the other momentum that we've gotten, that we can really start to move forward. It's been a long, dark time, these four years I've been president. And I had a teacher write an email that said essentially she was at her wits' end and about to quit, and then this year started, and she said, "I began to see light at the end of the tunnel." She is a national board teacher, therefore, we know she's a great teacher. And that's, and I wrote her back and said, "The really good thing here is not so much that you're going to continue to teach here, but that you're going to continue to teach boys and girls here." Because that's a great teacher that we could have lost. So I believe good things are going on. I believe some more things need to be built. You know, we need to do some building blocks on top of that, but I think we've got a great start. I want to thank you guys for your role in the negotiations, which, let's face it, is , you know, paramount, what you guys kind of decide in your meetings. And I want to thank you for all that you've done, and I am looking forward to the rest of this year. I think some great things are going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, Gary Shiffrin, and then our last speaker, David Kearns.
Dr. Blackburn, school board members, my name is Gary Shiffrin. I'm the Executive Director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators. I want to take a few minutes to just follow up on the presentation by Dr. Pace and the comments by Dan Bennett, and encourage a favorable vote for the inside survey under Board Item H34. I know I'm not telling you anything new when I say that the heart and soul of our school system are the people who work in our schools and the students who attend. It is the teachers, the students, their parents, the school-based and district administrators, and all others who play such a significant role in our successes. Our successes are not as a result of the outcome of a test, which may be a small factor in determining how well we are doing in regards to performance. Dr. Blackburn, I've heard you say on numerous occasions that relationships are really important, and I could not agree with you more. In addition, the fact that the FSA has been such a debacle, and the fact that the Superintendents' Association, amongst many other organizations, have asked for a moratorium on using the FSA results for school grades and teacher evaluations, adds to the mounting concern by all parties as to its validity. Keeping this in mind, I would like to offer some thoughts related to the inside survey that you will be discussing later this evening. One, the survey is a valid and reliable measure the principal can impact directly, rather than a test score that school leaders can own- rather than a test score that school leaders can only impact indirectly and lacks credibility in our current accountability system. Two, the results are not impacted by differences in demographics. Three, the survey would be used as a formative measure to inform school improvement planning and professional growth. Four, it would be used to identify bright spots and best practices from which the schools can learn. Last week, our president, Rich Dunko, and I met with Dr. Pace to offer our years of knowledge and experience within the BASSA organization to help mentor and support new and veteran school leaders striving for growth. We are convinced BASSA's involvement, as well as the inside survey, can make a positive impact on the success of our schools and the people who make things happen for our students. Thank you for your consideration.
The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers and your willingness to speak to the board. Oh, gosh, David, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip you. My sincere apologies.
No worries. No, that's okay. David Kearns, I'm a father of students that went through the school system here. I'm also a candidate for District 53 State Rep. Thanks for having me. I'd just like a show of hands for if you drove here in a car that's 10 years old. One? Okay. How about 23 years old? Nobody drove here in a car that's 23 years old. It's safety reasons. It's natural. Situation was brought to my attention by an article in Florida Today. 500 school buses, only 10% are under warranty. The average age of our school bus is 10 years. According to the article in Florida Today, the industry standard is 10 years for retirement. So our buses are all or mostly of retirement age. The 23-year-old bus is still out there chugging along. It's too legit to quit. That bus came off the line when MC Hammer was popular. If the average retirement age is 65, then this bus that's rolling around there at 23 years old is, is now 90 years old or older. The article shows no clear funding mechanism to immediately, and I'm not talking about next year, but immediately get the older buses off the road. A CDL inspection every morning does not cut it when you're dealing with buses which are senior citizens. As a former newspaper reporter, I went to the scene of a fatal bus accident, school bus accident in Indian River County in 1999. One child was killed. I went to the emergency room after the accident while parents were waiting for word about their children. There's a special sound that a mother makes when a child is in the emergency room, and that mother doesn't know whether or not that child is going to survive. I never want to hear that, that sound again. It's, it's a horrible sound. And the incidences that we could foresee in the near future, a bus stopped on the railroad tracks, a bus stopped on a causeway filled with six-year-olds, sixth graders, a bus stopped on I-95 with ninth graders going up to the Cape. I ask you, how bad does it have to get? We have to do something about this, and we have to do something about it now. As I said, not next year. We had some T-shirts that were given out tonight by corporate sponsors. That's great. Bus safety is very important. In 2014, this school board was relieved of $3.5 million per year from Northrop Grumman. Tax relief was given to Northrop Grumman, $3.5 million per year. I say an immediate fix might be to go to Northrop Grumman and say, "Listen, Northrop, we've been good citizens to you guys, and we would like you to donate some money for our school buses." And then we might approach Harris and some of our other large corporate people who have funds that might be donated. "We'll put your name right on the side of the school bus that you buy for us." So this might be something we can do in an emergency situation in the immediate to remedy this situation before we end up in the situation that I described in Indian River County.
Mr. Kearns, and I'm sorry about earlier. The board, this time. Now I wish to thank this evening's speakers and your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Okay. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn?
There are 17 agenda items under this category, seven with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items?
F-26 and 27.
Okay, F-26 and 27. That would be the easement to FPL at Gardendale. And F-27 would be the district facilities under project management, correct? Okay, those two items are pulled. Seeing no others, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made to approve by Mrs. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Which one would you like to start with, John?
Actually, and Mr. Theodore, you really don't have, you've answered most of the questions, but more directed towards Dr. Blackburn, and I can address both of these together. F-26 deals with Gardendale and easement, and really, the only reason I bring it up is because it identifies a school or a property, I shouldn't say a school, a property that this district still owns and still maintains with limited benefit to students directly, other than maybe some soccer clubs that use it right now. And it kind of plays into F-27, which is the district facilities plan. And so really, what I wanted to highlight was, and I think we've mentioned it before, but I'd really like to elevate this as a priority item for this board and yourself to, to come to grips with. We're five years and ticking from the end of the current Surtax, and the only plan that we have on the table is one that was discussed in a very short amount of time at a workshop back in March under the previous superintendent. And several of the board members had numerous questions about that plan and concerns about it, yet it's being presented as this is what we're going forward with. And if you look in the actual district facilities plan and the draft, the plan guide that goes with it, it's, it makes no equivalence as that we are going to build new schools, which is not what this board has directed, at least that I know of. And certainly, we haven't had the extensive discussion that I think we need to have, both as a board and as a community, to make sure that we have a long-term strategic plan for the entire district to make sure that, that we're utilizing our resources appropriately and that we have an idea of how we're going to pay for things down the road and whether or not new schools are the right option. Certainly, they may be, but I don't think we've exhausted that, that conversation past, and certainly not since you've been here. So I, I bring these two forward, and I realize that we have to submit that district facilities plan to the state because they require it, but I think it's going to need some amendment along the way. There's some generalities that are made in the out-years that I think are made a little, lack of a better word, we haven't, we haven't thought them through yet. And so they're making some generalities there that may or may not be in our best interest. So I would really like to elevate this as quick as possible to board discussion, community outreach, all those things that we've kind of discussed along the way. And other than that, I think that's about it, unless anybody else had anything.
I agree.
Understood. Consider it. Elevate it.
Okay, so motion to approve both of them then?
Motion to approve F-26 and F-27.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made to approve both F-26 and 27 by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mrs. Belford. Further discussion? Can you put them both on? Not at the same time. We'll have to do them separately. So...
That was 26, then.
So that's 26. Okay.
Motion to approve F-27.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Same two people for... Okay, so motion was made to approve by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mrs. Belford for the next item. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Would you like a break, or do you want to continue? Want to knock it out? Okay, let's continue then. Okay, we'll move on to the information agenda, items for board review, and will be brought, there's a... Okay, let's see if I can try this sentence again. "We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and will be brought back for action at a subsequent, subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight." Dr. Blackburn?
There are nine items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss anything on the information agenda?
Well, I, I think we ought to discuss H34, because we've been told that we're discussing it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I like how everyone saw a crystal ball.
No, I think it's worth at least a quick discussion, and probably H35 as well.
Okay, so I heard H34, H35. Any others? Okay, well, Mr. Craig, you started the discussion. What words of wisdom do you have for us?
All right. So absolutely, I want to thank both the speakers that talked about the inside survey. I think it's obviously a great tool. We had a good response, much greater than I thought it would be, which is awesome. The only thing that I would add to the backside is I would love to have maybe a game plan for how we close the loop on that survey. Everybody up here has taken a survey, and sometimes you get surveyed out, right? And with the advantage, and invention of Survey Monkey, it has become ridiculous sometimes. But that being said, if I'm going to take my time as a teacher to answer the survey, I want to make sure that we, as a, as a district and as a leadership, have a, a identified and, and defined process on how we're going to address those things back to the people who took the survey. It's great to talk about, you know, what we're going to do in workshops and how we're going to address culture issues and that type of thing, but that doesn't mean maybe something to the one teacher who, who put down a less-than-positive response. So I want to make sure that we have an idea how we're going to come full circle on those. And we don't have to decide that tonight, obviously, but I, I think you probably know that too, and you probably already have a plan, but I'd just like to highlight that.
Okay, Mrs. Belford?
I would just, to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Craig said, and that is, I think we saw some wonderful results in there, and certainly focusing on those bright spots and opportunities with, with BASSA and those principals that create a high culture at the school, I think are phenomenal. I just want to make sure that we, and you and I have had this conversation previously too, that we need to be really real about those opportunities for development and, and not, not glance over those or dismiss them. Because even if it's five schools that are falling in that low percentile and showing a real issue, that's a lot of students that are impacted by a poor culture. So I think we're on the right page on that, on the same page on that, per our previous discussions, but I just want to make sure that we keep that top of mind as well, that, that we, we need to take ownership of those challenges.
You know, my thoughts are with roughly 550,000 residents in Brevard County, it's not an unrealistic or unreasonable expectation to have 85 phenomenal principals running our schools. And phenomenal being largely measured by the type of collaborative, respectful culture that exists in a school, as indicated by the teachers who work in that school. I think it's a very doable initiative for us as a system, and I think the, the return on that cultural investment, I think we will reap for, for years and years and years. And, and you're right, the, that process will have to be very, very transparent. Some immediate plans are actually to produce the before-and-after results to teachers so that they know where the school was and where the school is right now. I'll definitely strongly encourage and not require principals to be very transparent about their individual action plans against some of that survey data, against all of the survey data. It is phenomenal and very appreciative to have the support from the teacher group, from the principal group in this effort, and of course, the board. So more details are definitely to follow, but it's a step in the direction of having all leaders, you know, really, quote-unquote, evaluated or input being provided by the people that we lead, right, across the system. So it's a step in that direction. There's definitely some room and opportunity to expand this to our non-instructional areas across the system as well, because as I've been presented, the, the morale piece extends beyond classrooms and schools as well. So it's an, it's a step in a direction for our system.
Okay, any, any more comments on that item? Okay. You wanted to comment on the charter application?
Yes, I actually did, because, you know, this board, but more importantly, our Office of School Choice, I think, took a little heat from a previous application. And I just wanted to highlight the fact that, that both of these applications have done very, very well, and that I think our School Choice Office and specifically the Charter School Division led by, have done a great job and given us a, a couple of applications that are going to provide a great benefit to their constituencies and the areas where they're operating in. And this is the way the process works, and I thank you and your whole team, Ms. Archer, for sticking to the principles of evaluating the charter's applications on their merit specifically, and making sure that our students are given the absolute best opportunity to succeed, no matter where that, that education comes from. So thank you for doing that, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now at board member reports. There are no discussion point sections, so I'll go immediately to board members. Who would like, since John did all the talking, why don't I start down at this end? Missy, do you have a report? Do you want the microphone on?
I can hold it. I think it won't be that long. Couple of, once again, wonderful opportunities that I've had since our last board, board meeting, and I need to say some thank yous around those. On September 30th, Dr. Blackburn and I attended the Tiesville Police Department School Administrator Meet and Greet Appreciation Type Ceremony. And they do that every year, and it really is a wonderful opportunity to build connection and relationships with our local law enforcement. Lieutenant Scully was there with us as well. And then, of course, all of our north area principals or assistant principals and our north area superintendent representatives as well, Dr. Reinhardt, and DJ, I think, was there as well. So many thanks to them for that effort and, and building those relationships. On October 1st, I attended the BFT retirees luncheon, and you guys get out, get out pens and paper so you can jot this down, because it's important info. Two things came to light from that luncheon. One is that we have a lot of BFT retirees that are not familiar with our Legacy Club. And so there was someone there that shared with them about the Legacy Club, but I think reaching out to them more directly, because they were very excited with the little bit that they heard. And then the second one, which is what you really need your pencils for. Our BFT retirees have been doing a program called the Three Rs, recycling, reading, and rewarding. And what they've been doing is they've been taking books, lightly-used books, and stuffed animals, lightly-used stuffed animals, lightly-loved stuffed animals, and putting them together and delivering them to schools. They so far have delivered books to Endeavor Cambridge University Park in Harbor City, and, and they have hit the primary grades at those schools. So really, you're reaching a lot of kids and getting them excited about reading, but they have some needs. They need Lego books. They need snakes, both books and figures, no live snakes, please. But, but snake figures, whether it be stuffed animals or, you know, little plastic figurines of snakes to go along with the books so the kids can have something to play with in the book. They also need cars, books and toy cars, anything frozen. The kids are asking for, for things from the movie Frozen. So characters or, or anything that goes, yeah, not like popsicles. They also need books about sharks, and keep in mind, these are for primary-age kids. They need books about sharks, and they need books about Star Wars. So if any of you have any of those laying around that you would be interested in donating, those can be dropped off at the BFT office, or you can reach out to Fran Bear, who is lead for the BFT retirees, and they would greatly appreciate that, and they can impact more kids' lives. So I told them I would be happy to share. So, I told them I would be happy to share that. October fifth, I met with our new principal at Astronaut High School just to start building that relationship and I just feel like I have to give a shout out to our area superintendents as well as our HR folks. One of the things that she mentioned to me is she had recently had a conversation with another principal from a different district and I won't say where, kind of newly into the position and she said that her experience as far as support that she has received and the experience that this other principal from the other district had could not be farther apart. She said that everyone really has been there helping her get into her new position and, and guiding her and supporting her and in the other district, that was not at all the case. So, shout out to those folks who are helping our new principals grow their roots where they are. And then on October eighth, I attended our superintendent's advisory council and that's where we have the, the three groups that are working on communication resources and morale and they continue to do amazing work. This is the second time that they were together in their groups and were actually able to get into some more in-depth conversation and, and put together some plans. Our resources group met with our business, couple of our business partners and a couple of our business partner coordinators from the schools to really look at how this works functionally. Great dialogue there and great things that they're coming up with moving forward that I think will make a big difference for the district as a whole. October eighth, the ninth, I was at Art and Algorithms and I have to give a shout out to them because not only is that an amazing event that my children loved, but throughout the week, we had hundreds of BPS students that were able to go their own field trips. And they, it, it just truly was amazing. My own son, when I told him I was taking him on Thursday, he goes, "Mom, I don't like art. I don't want to go." And I said, "No, we are, we're going to go, you know, you'll, you'll enjoy it. Try this new experience." And, and he did. Both of the kids just had a phenomenal time and lots of really cool things there and getting kids excited about technology and how it all fits together. So, many thanks to all of the folks that, that put that together, Titusville, Greater Renaissance, Brevard Cultural Alliance, lots of support, obviously, from the Chamber and various organizations. But amazing event and a great opportunity for our students. And then last night, I had the honor of going to Madison Middle School to meet with a group of parents and their administrator who are working on starting a parent group at the school. And they had reached out to me to come and speak to them because some of the parents were part of the birth of PTO at Oak Park when, when we started there. And so, I just want to commend them because they, I, I think it will make a big difference for the school going forward and they really are going at it very open-mindedly with a focus on not only parents and teachers, but also incorporating students and really looking at serving there. So, many thanks to them for all of the work that they are doing to really turn that around.
Thank you. Mr. Ziegler.
Many of you have heard me talk about Tie Day that we do at many, at a couple of the, well, middle schools. We probably, we started at Stone Middle School. Thank you. Last Friday, we did Cocoa Junior Senior High again and we're, now when we return to the schools, we're the point where we used to do seventh and eighth grade and now we just have to do seventh each year because they get their tie. What we do is we, a group of men, professionals from Civilian Military Council, military leaders, elected officials, business professionals, get together with, and come to the school with ties and assemble the boys and teach them about, about respect and handshake and looking somebody in the eye and, and then we give them their first tie. We teach them how to tie the tie and you can see their attitude change just as they're receiving their tie and then when they get back in their stands with their, with their tie. And it's really, it's an amazing experience. And then, and then, so we did that Friday and then a month prior, we had done Stone for, I think, the second or third time. But, and I only bring that up because last Tuesday was Walk to School Day. We had forty-three schools participating in Walk to School and I got many invitations. My first one was Stone Middle School, one of your schools, Mrs. Neese, but I tuck them up on their offer. Schools have always been near and dear, near and dear to my heart. So, I walked with Stone Tuesday, right in early Tuesday morning and as I got passed by hundreds of students, because I just guess I wasn't walking fast enough, I noticed ties on some of the students. And I was, I had to catch up to those kids and I, I got them over. Of course, I wanted a picture with them and I, I looked at them, I go, "Did you tie your own tie?" And they very proudly stood up, they, "Yes, sir, I tied my tie." And I really, I don't get tickled very often, but I'll tell you what, that really touched me. That's why I sent you some pictures of that. And that, is that little time and effort spent with those students and giving them a tie. I want to, we're gonna try and see if we can't expand this to all of the middle schools. It's a, the financial challenge is really not that big a deal, but the logistical of assembling the business professionals to come out and spend that time, that's where the challenge comes in. So, very exciting week last week between the walk and going to Cocoa Junior Senior High again. Last thing I want to talk about is yesterday, Dr. Blackburn and I went to, and Mrs. Irwin, went to the Central Florida School Board Coalition Meeting to discuss our legislative agenda. And of course, top of com, the top of the conversation was all about testing accountability and the superintendent's stand as they stood together to make a statement to the state about having no confidence in, in the system at this point in time. And conversation ensued about how we would word our position and I just want to let the board know that I very adamantly and repeatedly said, we should say nothing other than we stand with the superintendents because I think unity on this issue is paramount. I don't want any legislator, any state official to say, "Well, the superintendents and the school boards can't make up their minds." So, on your behalf, I hope it's okay, but I was adamant that we stand lockstep with the superintendents. And when it comes to a solution, I also made a statement. I don't particularly think as board members, especially myself, I'm not an educator, give a solution. I think the superintendents are the experts and their staff are the experts in solutions and we ought to let them give recommendations and again, stand by them. And so, that's the position I took on behalf of this board.
Thank you. You want this on?
Sure. I have, let's see, I have a few fun things at the end, but first I have to get through a little business. Last week, the commissioners denied, they delayed for a year the use of impact fees, the changes of the districts and the impact fees. And so, I ended up getting a few calls from a couple of small businesses and constituents and some people at some of our schools around here. So, I guess they just really didn't understand the process and I want to make sure that everybody understands what went on. Last November, Mr. Theodore brought us a letter to all the board members. Everyone here was on the board at the time, it was November twenty-first, stating that the Brevard County, them over there, had, had a study done on impact fees and it was completed and it had some recommendations. And we were given all that information. On March thirty-first, we had a workshop and the board gave Mr. Theodore direction to take the recommendation of one district at that time and whatever the fees would be to the commissioners. On April sixth, the Educational Facilities Benefit District Advisory Committee had a meeting. That's a big, a lot of stuff. But basically, it is a committee that looks at what we should do in the district, the county, and including us for facility, impact fees. And in attendance, and this is what's important because it's not just Brevard Public Schools, it is representatives from all of our cities. There's someone from Brevard County as a representative, Mr. Theodore, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa, Cocoa Beach, Indy Atlantic, Indian Harbor Beach, Melbourne, Rockledge, Satellite, Titusville, and West Melbourne. And I think there's Grant Valkaria on there as well, who wasn't at this particular one. They, they met on April sixth, they discussed what was done in the study. They weren't, they approved, they approved unanimously to go forward and continue looking at it. And on April twenty-third, Mr. Theodore wrote a letter to Stockton Witten and said that he was informally authorized by the school board to transmit the request to the school board at the March thirty-first meeting. And if the formal request from the school board is required to be, if a formal request is required to begin the process, please let me know and I will obtain the same. But instead, what happens is that they have the, these committees that work on behalf of the county and the district together. And so, on May fourteenth, they had another meeting of that long-named Impact Fee Advisory Committee. And again, they, what their recommendations at the time were no less than two benefit districts and they were advocating for six thousand dollars for the impact fees for single-family homes. And I'm not sure if it, there was a discount on the multifamily and the mobile homes at that time. But, after that meeting, Mr. Theodore then in June sent a letter stating where they were and asking the county commission to give great weight to the advisory committee's recommendation. So, as, so again, as we started this in March, giving him permission to go forward with what, at least a part of what the study said, it was out of our, it wasn't what we did, it was what the committee was going forward with. On July fourteenth, we received another email from Mr. Theodore saying that Mrs. Neese and him were going to attend the workshop at the county and they would be there to answer any questions and provide information. On July sixteenth, there was an article in the paper that said that the Brevard County Commissioners approved writing of an ordinance to include the recommendation changes from four districts to two and fifty percent of the study recommendation. The study said ten thousand and so, the commissioners were good with five thousand. On August twenty-first, I know this is long and lengthy, but it's important that the people that are complaining to me understand the process. On August twenty-first, we got a board update and we get weekly board updates, but this time it included something that said that the Brevard County Commission voted to direct the staff to prepare an ordinance and that it is tentatively scheduled to come before the commission at their meeting on October sixth, after a review by the local planning authority. So, then another group looks at it, which is, the members of that group are also members of each of the cities. On September twenty-eighth, there was an article in the paper that said that the local planning authority approved the, the changes of the districts from four to two, adopting the new fee schedule of fifty percent. And they voted unanimously to take those recommendations forward to the commission and then it would be approved by the commission, if it were approved, then it would go into effect ninety days later. I want to go back just a little bit to the July meeting on the one you, you attended. I, I looked at that meeting and Courtney Barker is the city manager for Satellite Beach and she made some notable notes that day. She said, some of the things that she said was that since Brevard County creates the need for schools, meaning them, the county, since they allow growth in certain areas, that, you know, we need, that the cities and the county need to be partners with the districts because as they are creating, allowing for growth, we then have to build the schools in order for, to take care of that growth. She said that she had taken the entire committee, the fee, impact fee committee had taken Mr. Theodore to task and taken him through several what-if scenarios and came to the conclusion that we could not redistrict our way out of this because of the shape of our county. And basically, if you look at what's happened and what is going to happen, we could move part of Space Coast or Port St. John into Titusville and then Cocoa into Port St. John and then Rockledge into Cocoa. And so, we could do that, but we're gonna do a whole heck of a lot of, A, redistricting and busing. And that, and we would be getting away from what most people in our community choose is local schools and they don't really want to be bussed that far away. She also agreed that the use of the impact fees was important because we, Brevard Public Schools, cannot get state funding based on, we can't fill the school, it, it's not practical for us to fill the schools starting in the north with everybody in the south. And if we can't fill every space, they're not going to fund us. But it's really just not a practical thing to do. And she said that based on that, the impact fees were currently our only source of available funding for new schools. She said that the community worked hard to find a compromise and that a unanimous, that it was unanimously supported and would aid the district in being able to save for and build schools and that was the overall attempt is to try to save for something that we are going to do in the future. She also said that, that if the changes were not made, that basically what we're going to do is if we needed the money is, and needed to build schools, we were, instead of putting the burden on new homes, we would be putting the burden on existing taxpayers and the exist, the current population. She also felt that an increase was needed because it would be unreasonable, in her words, to suggest that the costs have stayed stagnant since two thousand and four, since this impact fee structure has been put into place and that they worked hard to work together to make a unanimous decision. So, fast forward to last week, the commissioners voted against the recommendation of the Impact Fee Advisory Committee that met twice, that was populated by a member of every city in our county and also against the local planning authority, which has members on it from every city in the county. And that, and I feel that they did it against the will of most of the board members. And we have, like I said before, we have impact fees that, that are used to, that can only be used for two things, to pay debt or to build new capacity. You can't use it for buying buses, you can't use it for maintaining a school to add, it's only for building new schools. And we cannot get loans and we cannot bond out, do the bond thing, whatever. And, and from my perspective, I would think that committees that were from all cities in the county would hold some weight and they all voted unanimously. But, we had, according to the reports, it was in the paper, we know how the paper is, but it said that two board members offered what they considered last-minute suggestions to vote no on the recommendation of the school district and against the Impact Fee Advisory and the Local Planning Authority. They spoke to two commissioners. And, Mr. Theodore, can you please tell me if you knew that this was coming? Were you aware that the commissioners, that, that any board members were, had an issue with this? Pardon me? You were not. So, that came as a surprise. The changes to the impact fees have been, have been delayed for one year. My issue is that had they delayed it for three months, that we could all have discussion on it, I wouldn't have a problem. But delaying it for a year is going to cost the district a half million dollars. And in a time when we don't have a lot of extra money, in fact, we don't have any extra money, a half million dollars is gonna make a difference. So, what happens now, the schedule for the building, for building a school in West Melbourne will have to be delayed. I don't know what the new schedule would look like, but it certainly can't get there if we don't have the increased fees.
Do they have to wait a year to bring it back?
That's what they said they were doing.
But my understa, Mr. Bysline, they don't have to wait a year to bring it back, do they?
They can always change the motion that was made to delay it a year if they, if they choose to do so.
Okay.
May I finish?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'm just getting clarification.
Well, I'm just going by the information I have. Well, I'm just going by the information I have and the information that I got from Mr. Theodore last week was that they were delaying it for a year.
Okay, I wasn't one of the board members, so I don't know.
So, yeah, neither was I. Although, you know, the district can certainly use more portables, but we do that with a cost. Adding portables to schools is a cost. It takes money to move them, to install them, to add water, sewer, electric sidewalks and covers for the, for the sidewalks, which are required. It would probably require some redistricting and then of course, if you ever built a school, you would redistrict again. And so basically, to those people who called me and wanted to know, the process was in place. I had no idea that after, this process has been going on for six months, I had heard nothing. I was asked, why didn't I go and fight for it over at the school board? I didn't know that there was an issue. I didn't know. I assumed after six months of this and 16 board meetings between March 31st and, and last week, that we could have either had some public discussion, but it wasn't there. So I had no idea, or I would have gone over there and actually given some input on this. So, and to quote you earlier, basically what happened is the squeaky wheel got listened to. So, you know, we were talking about who gets the CTE programs, well, I guess the squeaky wheel does get listened to. My, my suggestion is this, that, and I think that this probably wouldn't have happened this way had we done things differently. And so my suggestion is that although I've been on the board for seven years and have never had this particular issue, I think that this came up because we did it by consent, consensus. And I am thinking that perhaps we need to go with consensus at a workshop and then bring it up again and have a vote on it, up or down, three, two, whatever, so that they feel comfortable that it was a board decision. Because it's okay to disagree. I have no problem with that. I didn't appreciate being, not knowing about it. So those are my comments on that for my constituents.
But can I?
No, I'd like to just finish my stuff.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what action you want as a result of that. You asked for something as a result of that.
I'm just saying that in the future, when we have consens, we don't take votes at board workshops.
Correct.
And normally when we have consensus at board workshops, superintendent takes direction, right? We, we give direction based on consensus. And apparently, because this wasn't a board vote, it was okay to do this. I think if there had been a board vote, that maybe any angst about the six-month process would have been brought forward to the board to convince us to change the vote. I mean, because I don't know why else it would be done this way. So, and I'm just saying that, you know, to cover ourselves in the future so that when, you know, Mr. Theodore wasted a lot of time, you know, these committees spent a lot of time working very hard trying to come to reasonable decisions to be something that was supposed to be in the best interest of the district and the county. And, and so I just feel like maybe had it been a vote, it would have been more respected than consensus because it wasn't a real vote.
Okay.
That's, anyway, so.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were requesting.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, that's the only reason I adopted.
So, the end of that. So now on to the fun things that I did. And Dr. Pace, you're going to have to help me with this E-C-E-T.
E-C-E-T, Set Two.
Yes. E-Set Two. I don't know what it stands for because it used to be B-C-E-T Two.
Right, it's Empowering, Celebrating Effective Teaching.
There you go. Empowering.
And, and celebrating.
And celebrating effective teaching. It used to be called something else. And how many years have we been doing this?
Three years.
This is the third year and I've been to every one of them. And it is the best program we have going, in my opinion. It is, it is one place that you can go and have, it's just so positive. There's a lot of positive stories, there's about why teachers teach and, and we have students come up and tell how they've been inspired and impacted, positively impacted by teachers. And it's, it's where teachers teach teachers. And they have all these breakout groups with different things and you can choose what to go to. And it is, it is just really an exciting part of my year to go there and I really enjoy it. The teachers are excited to be there. They take best practices from different classrooms and present it to, like I was in the middle school science. And so they had some things that they were doing and had the teachers in there and learning and we did some experiments and learned how to look at the standards and to do, you know, how to really make your classrooms sing. And it is by far my favorite event to, to go to. And so thank you for inviting us, I really enjoyed that. It was another spectacular year. Also, this year I, past few weeks, I visited Johnson and Creel with, where is she, she's not here, with Jane Klein. And so two more schools out there. I also came in, there was the STEM teacher workshop, the mini-conference that was held here. And I came in for that and was able to attend all five of the sessions and that was fun. Each of the, it was a middle school and middle school teachers, sixth through eighth, and media. And they had robotics going on, they had all kinds of different stuff and it was just fascinating to, to watch each of the groups, they were all over the, the building. And again, the teachers were really enjoying learning some new stuff to take back to their, their classes. I went to Kennedy where we were one of several schools along Fisk Boulevard, I think Gulfview, Viera High and of course even the, this facility. And the charter school had students standing out there for Sheriff Deputy Casey Smith.
Great job with that.
And the entire, I was at Kennedy Middle School and the kids were so excited about going out and, and watching him come home. They made signs and it was just, they've, the entire property line down Fisk was loaded with, with students and it was a real exciting time for them. And Thursday, I attend the legislative priorities in Clearwater. And I agree with you, Mr. Ziegler, that it has to be the same message. That was the message I took to FSBA after the superintendent's letter. I got in touch with them and said, you know, we need to support the same thing. And so that's what we will be doing as FS, as FSBA over there is trying to get all 67 districts to simply say, we support what the superintendents say because you said it all. And, and I think that, that cohesiveness is better for all of us. And then Mrs. Irwin did some meetings with the parent leaders and some other groups here to encourage them to start a email writing campaign. I told her that I was going to be at FSBA and what I wanted to do is coordinate FSBA's campaign with ours so that if, if we all do it next week, whether your parents, school boards, everyone does it the same week, that we can inundate them. Apparently if, if legislators receive 500 or more within a 24 or 48-hour period, they actually pay attention. I don't know if it's true or not, but we're going to try it. We're going to go by, by, for 50,000, how's that? I think across the state, we should be able to inundate them pretty well. They might actually have some server problems if we do it right. So we'd like to piggyback FSBA on our timing, so I'm going to try for that. And I sent out a couple of emails to board members about legislative priorities. I heard back from Mrs. Belford was the only one that responded, so if anybody else wants to respond to me for Thursday would be good. If you need me to send it back out, I will do that. Is that a yes please across the board? Anyway, take a look at it and I will take your input and go do the best I can for all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you.
Mr. Craig?
Thank you. Well, I was going to mention the STEM Manufacturing Day that Dr. Blackburn attended back in, I guess about a week ago now. I had about 150 people there. We had our, it was up at, amazingly enough, my wife's company, but it was an open house that highlighted manufacturing STEM opportunities, both at the primary, middle school, high school and college level, and how our community can do a better job of kind of pooling all our resources together, understanding what everybody brings to the table. Some great people were there presenting, they had several different tables with different groups representing them. So thank you, Dr. Blackburn, for attending that. And from the adult, adult education group, there was a contingent of people that came as well. Since much of what Ms. Henderson directed or talked about was obviously directed at me, that's fine and I will address. First of all, I will apologize to both Mr. Theodore and Dr. Blackburn. That was a last-minute, and I'll explain it in a minute, but one of the things we talked about at our retreat was no surprises and, and that disappoints myself that I, that that happened that way. We'll explain it in a minute, but it doesn't excuse the fact that I should have alerted Dr. Blackburn of what I thought and still think is a, is a good road for this, for all of us to, to take. And that is, first of all, there was no vote, yes or no, there was no up or down, so I'm not quite sure where that came from. That was not in the newspaper, nor was it in anything. So what the commission did was basically just say, hey, we're just going to table this for a few minutes now. How long they tabled it for, I, that's up to them. Mr. Baiceline has advised us now that they can bring it back and I'm sure they can at any time. The, the, as, as I stated earlier today in, in asking Dr. Blackburn to elevate our, our facilities plan and our facilities budgeting to a much higher level, this is all part of that. Yes, we had a workshop back in March, yes, we discussed this. I had very specific questions of both finance and of facilities at that time. They've been on the board items for some time and every time I've asked finance, it keeps getting pushed off for another month. So, and I've asked many times. And so there is no surprise, I don't think either from Mr. Theodore or I know from Ms. Preston, that I have had specific questions about how we came to this, what the other options are, what the return on investment of all those options are and what type of discussion we're going to have to make sure that the options that we bring forth to this community using their tax dollars are the right ones for not only the taxpayers, but for obviously eventually the children. And I brought those constantly to them.
What?
Sorry?
He's got the floor now.
Anyway, the, those questions have still not been answered. I still have not seen the actual numbers compared to, of, of what it would cost to expand schools, what it would cost to add portables, what it would cost to bus, all those things that need to be on the table so that we can make an informed discussion. It also has not been brought to the community. And as I've stated many times, we close schools with little to no community impact. We are not, I, I will not sit here and let us build schools with little to no community impact. And if we take, or input, thank you, Andy. If we are going to take more money from our taxpayers, we better have a plan and a darn good one to use it. And our superintendent has not weighed in on that plan. I haven't been in a meeting yet where we have discussed that as a group and what his long-term vision is. So yes, I, as both a taxpayer and as a board member, I reached out to a couple people and asked them, is there a chance that you could just hold off just for a short time so that we can make sure that we have a plan that we can bring to you instead of just asking for money and going, hey, you know what, we, we think we know what we're going to do with it, we're not quite sure. In the paper, it says we're going to build schools, we've said that really we may or may not build schools, that's not a done deal yet and, and that has been noted as well. So yes, I made those requests to them, whether they acted on them or not, that was totally up to them. I have no, you know, wasn't sitting there asking them or twisting their arm to do so. I think it was the right thing to do. I think that it was a responsible thing to do to let our superintendent weigh in, have a plan that is his own plan and that he is comfortable with and that the community is comfortable with before we start asking for more money. And just to take money to then put aside, I haven't seen the restricted account built yet in our, in our budget that that money was going to go into and it was coming on January 1st, certainly wasn't in the forecasted budget for exactly how it was going to be restricted funds. Many of those questions that were asked back in March. So absolutely, I, I asked that they delay it, might be absolutely the right thing to do. I don't know. I don't know what our superintendent believes yet. And this needs to be his plan, not the last superintendent's plan that was discussed at a half-hour workshop, in the last half of a workshop back in March, right before he left or before he resigned. So I think that's about all I had to say. Thank you.
Anything else you want, that wasn't?
Oh no, I think that was it.
Okay, just a second. Okay. I just have three things. The first one is I want to thank Dr. Mullins for letting me tag along. A couple of weeks ago, I went to visit Hoover and Palm Bay Elementary and sat in on a couple of meetings just with strategic planning and how that looks in the, in the school and, because I've really asked for the meetings to be not what I call dog and pony shows, but really what do you do? And I've asked for the staff to show me, what, what is it you do? And so got to sit in on those meetings and really enjoyed that. So thank you, Dr. Mullins. Second item is I hope you have looked at your board updates because the October 2nd board update had the new look of what the purchasing bids of the agenda will look like. So if you've had a chance to look at that, my question will be, that will be what it will look like at our next board meeting unless you have concerns about that. You'll see there's a lot, a new information that I think will be very beneficial. You'll notice there's even a little tab for you, Harold, that will note whether you have looked at it or not. And it'll be breaking out by, broken, breaking out, boy, my grammar's going tonight, but it will indicate where it came up through the ranks, whether it's a new bid, an old bid, whether it's an increase, a decrease, all those questions we've been asking for through the past month. So I'm very happy by the way the template looks. Are there anything that you don't see that you'd like to see? Are you ready for it to roll out for the next meeting?
Are you asking now?
Yes.
I thought it looked great. I was so excited to see some of the additions, like, you know, with the historical information and the, I was very appreciative of that. So thanks to you and to, you know, the rest of the staff that worked on, on making those changes. I think it's going to be wonderful and help us to be more informed in our choices.
Great, so you'll see that at the next board meeting. Okay, the third item is in your packet, is a resolution that I would like to add for the next agenda. Satellite Beach City Council passed this at their last meeting and I thought it was such a great idea that I want to join the caravan of supporting the bill that will be coming forward for the legislature. You'll see in your packet, they, Satellite Beach actually numbers their resolutions, we don't number theirs. We don't number theirs. And it is a resolution supporting the draft bill entitled Misuse of Public Office Act. And you'll see it's, I think Tammy, you just took the resolution that Satellite Beach did and inserted School Board of Brevard County. And I'd just like for you guys to take a look at that. You'll see the supporting documentation with the Senate bill, all the strikeouts. This is the one that Florida Today has done an article about. Matt Reed has been promoting. And I would just like to get on board and support this for the same reasons that I can't say it as well as Matt has. I was hoping Jessica would stay around long enough to hear that we were on board with this. I'll text her to let her know. But I would like to move forward with this unless you guys have serious concerns about it. Well, that's why I'm just bringing it.
I like it. If I might just comment as to why this is so important.
Well, for the same reason we found with the Flag Act that unless you get cities and counties behind it, sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle. But Gannett has gotten it out to all of their people. And I just thought, we get cities and counties behind it. The legislation, as it goes out there, things seem to fly through a lot quicker.
We do an annual ethics training. And we've learned at the ethics trainings that there are times when there are things that we may get involved in that are questionable, like in Sunshine laws and things of that nature, that even we consult our attorney and get guidance and approval. And we do things according to direction, even maybe by the state ethics committee. Then somebody can come back and say, ah, 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 that was a violation. And then you could get in trouble for doing it, even though you had all the best intentions in the world.
Are you asking why the resolution?
The resolution, I just, the law, right?
Oh, are you asking why the resolution?
The Misuse of Public Office Act. And here it's talking about ethics, regulation of ex, the public officials. Is that the one you're talking about, right? Because I'm just saying, I support it because there are a lot of, a lot of ways that elected officials would get in trouble without having any intent on getting in trouble.
This one is more so with the contractors. And also, it's, the most important word in here is intentionally or knowingly. It's the intentionally or knowingly that's given prosecutors grief through the years. Is that's the hard part that's proving. It's back on page three. That's the main word they want to take out. That's the number one thing they have about prosecuting in this state is that, read through this documentation. You'll see the words they want, they want to.
Andy, I'd be happy to talk to any board member. I've been following this. I've read this carefully. And I'd be happy to talk. Just give me a call.
Okay. But you, Harold, see what Florida Today and their agency trying to promote this is being, I know Rich is going to be the House sponsor of this.
Yeah, well, this has been a problem in the state for years and years and years. And like I said, I'm real familiar with it. And I'd be happy to talk to any one of you who wants to call me.
Okay. But I know Representative Workman sponsoring it from the House. And Senator Gates is for the Senate. So, I just thought we would get on board, I know, and see if we could start the ball rolling. Okay. And that's all I had for tonight. Anybody else?
Quickly, just want to thank Mr. Craig for the invitation to Manufacturing Day. Sorry I couldn't make it. Had an event in Cape Canaveral. Couldn't go up there, come back, get the wife, go back up to an event. So, but I think it's great that Craig Technologies and other companies step up and provide these opportunities for kids. It's really a big deal. And I know it's a lot of effort for them too. So, thank you.
Dr. Blackburn, do you have a superintendent's report?
Thank you. First and foremost. Yes.
Okay. There you go. Whoops. There.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the board. The community mayor may not know this, but from day one, this board has made it abundantly clear that that staff morale, the way staff is treated, the way staff is compensated are two major priorities. And so, that fueled, that drove our conversations and really the settlement that we were so fortunate to move towards last week. And hopefully, we see that ratification really, really soon. Definitely want to thank our internal staff, Dr. Pace, our negotiators, and BFT. The relationships that we are building, without fear or flinch of holding this district's feet to the fire, we're still able to work together with a spirit of collaboration and richness in order to do what's right for our teachers. And so, let's just do more of it. It is noticeable and it's very much appreciated. And so, thank you for that. With this contract, we're able to, you know, put forth some compensation. That's the highest our teachers have received in a very long time. Do some things about some inequity issues and also fix some healthcare benefit issues. So, it's just phenomenal that we're able to come together and get that done. So, thank you. Secondly, I want to talk about what's coming as far as strategic planning is concerned for the entire community. As we know, I've been out and about as many places as possible since July 20, doing a listening and learning tour of Brevard. What the plan is, in December, before the winter break, and you'll hear a lot more communication about this, but the plan is to have a report out, a public report out to the community and to the board around what I think I've heard and what I think the go-forward priorities should be. At that time, I'm going to be asking for three things from the community at large, from each and every stakeholder that wants to participate. Number one, I'll ask for some level of confirmation that I've actually heard the right pieces of information, okay? Secondly, suggestions on how, if I've chosen the right priorities, some suggestions on how those priorities can be achieved. And then, last but certainly not least, I'll be looking for men and women to raise their hands and volunteer to help bring those strategies to fruition and help execute those strategies in our strategic plan. So, you'll hear more about that in December. Last but certainly not least, it was mentioned here several times, back at the end of September, Florida Association of District School Superintendents, I met, there were 62 or 63 of the 67 of us represented in a room over in Tampa. And the decision to come to our position, I will tell you, did not come lightly. If you can just imagine 62 or 63 type A personalities in a room trying to come to consensus on one item, that was, that was difficult. So, it took several hours. And we knew that what we were considering was going to be very, very impactful for the superintendent's to give the state's accountability system a complete vote of no confidence. But that's exactly what we did. And so, I want to make sure that we understand what that means. Complete means complete. We were offered opportunities to collaborate and help tweak the existing system. We refused to participate in collaborative effort because the feeling was, and I support this 1,000%, that if we continue to tweak a flawed system, we'll just exacerbate the problem. So, if you hear that superintendent, and your superintendent, is refusing to play nicely in the sandbox, I just want to make sure you understand why. So, that, and superintendents across the state are resigning and withdrawing from committees and their workgroups that they belong to. I'm a rookie, so I didn't belong to any of them anyway. So, I don't have to resign. But that is a movement right now for superintendents to resign from any type of state committee that's working on the current plan. Now, as soon as there is admission that the current system is in fact broken, I think I feel comfortable speaking for all the superintendents that will be in our cars, on planes headed to Tampa, Tallahassee, wherever we need to be, to work on what a new plan looks like. But until that happens, we're just not participating in tweaking. I'm sorry? Or, yeah, no twerking either. Got a lively crowd here tonight. So, some essential pieces of that position, though, right? We made recommendations. The first recommendation, after we declared zero confidence in the system, was do not produce school grades. That was the first recommendation. Students, thankfully, have been protected by the flawed system, at least for this year. But I will tell you, teachers and their evaluation, principals, communities in the potential receipt of grades that do not reflect all of the hard work that's going on in classrooms and communities, they're not protected right now. And so, item number one, do not produce school grades based on 2015 FSA results. Suggestion number two, if you feel compelled to produce a grade, make it be a grade of I, okay? There's a rich history here in Florida. When there is, there's a lack of total information for a particular school, then an issuance of I takes place. And when you're looking at right now, the complete absence of learning gains from what could potentially be our school grade, it's about half of what the current grade is based upon. And so, if the state feels compelled to release a school grade, then the second suggestion was release a grade of incomplete for all of Florida schools. Third, was to make good on the recommendation from the Alpine validity study. And two, which was not a part of the validity study, but to consider what negative impact that technology glitches had on the performance of our children last year. That was not a part of the study. And I would, just applying a touch of common sense, if your children were going to take a test this Friday in whatever school, whatever grade, whatever subject, and there were several fire alarms, you know, several power outages, you know, several disruptions to that testing environment, I don't think an educator in this system would allow the results from that exam to negatively impact a student. I don't think we'd have to send an email out at all to our teachers. I think they would know, hey, because of those three back-to-back fire alarms and the two power outages, we're not going to count this test, right? But that's essentially what's going on with the technology glitches that we all experienced last year. And last but not least, kind of reiterates the position we're taking. And that is conduct a complete review overhaul, if you will, of the current accountability system. Zero feeling that we do not need an accountability system, okay? We are very much pro accountability. We are pro making sure that our students receive an appropriate education, that our teachers are working in an appropriate environment, that our principals receive the necessary support, et cetera, et cetera. And we are pro holding ourselves accountable for all of that. But the current system we have didn't help us do any of it, right? And so, last but not least, they've heard from the 67 superintendents. And we are receiving a lot of support from around the state. So, it's really important that groups and individuals send communication to our state board, to our Commissioner of Education, to our state lawmakers in support of the position that the superintendents have taken. And that concludes my report.
I worked with Mrs. Irwin. And we, out on our website, we have now the DOE and the, we do, right? That's what we talked about. The DOE, the legislators on the education committees and the governor's office. Anything else?
State Board of Education?
Oh, State Board is on there, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's really, it's as simple as going on and clicking on a link and it will pre-populate an email for you. So, alls you have to do is click on them. You could hit all those groups in like 45 seconds with the same cut and paste message. We also just produced another video that is now on there, which shows the, it shows the FAD's overview of their recommendations. And we're getting it out to the different organizations as well and offering to share it. So, just so you know, it's right here. If you pull these up, if you just click on one, right? Let's say Florida House Appropriations. You're going to go into an email and it pre-populates it for you.
And I'll be giving that to FSBA as well because it, rather than people having to click on every single one, we're putting them, now, we did it this way because this way we did it last year and it's a lot easier.
It's a lot easier. Okay. I don't know what's wrong with this.
Any other business to come before the board? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Yeah, I'll let Jackie take it.